She said, "Well, maybe two years is enough." But I think that's you.
Okay, it's 5:30. And for the record, my name is Guy Domenaya. We, the regular meeting of the Cape Coral Charter School Governing Board is brought to order. Today is Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, City of Cape Coral Council Chambers. And if we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. If we could stand for Pledge of Allegiance? And first, we'll present colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. We could have our roll call.
Manaya.
Present.
Jackson.
Present.
Attaselli.
Here.
Long.
Absent.
Michaels.
Present.
Stout.
Absent.
Parent representatives. Hoagland. OHS. Shade. OMS. Soto. OES. Rousseau. OEN.
Great, thank you. And if we could have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And how about a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda?
I think we have a...
We have a change.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we add Dr. John Omenson's report to Staff Comment Number 13A.
Okay.
Motion to move to A? What was it? I'm sorry.
Motion to add Dr. Omenson's report when we get to 13A.
13A. Motion to add 13A.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we have the public comment. So we're, we have up to 45 minutes, three minutes per person. So if anyone would like to make a comment, you're welcome to come up to the podium. Would you like to make a public comment? Okay, very good. Very good. Yeah, she gets it. There we go. Alrighty, thank you. And now we have the consent agenda. Mrs. Collins, anything you'd like to say before we vote on the consent agenda?
Does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda? I can go over the items very quickly. Item A has to do with a bus that was auctioned for $7,000. We're requesting that the Governing Board allow us to put that back into the budget for additional fuel expenditures that we anticipate over the course of this budget year. Item B has to do with a small grant called the SORT grant that each elementary school is receiving, Items B and C. It is for reading literacy and tutoring. Oasis Elementary South receives $11,110.26 and Oasis North receives $9,883.57.
Great. Any questions?
Those are things that we have to have in place, correct? Per state statute for the schools? The tutoring and the...
If we want to accept this grant funding, that's what we, that's how it needs to be expended on tutoring for students to increase reading literacy, professional development for teachers so that they understand and can apply the science of reading literacy.
Any other questions? Okay, motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we have the superintendent's report. Mrs. Collins.
Good evening, Board. Jackie Collins, Superintendent. Trying to find the right button to press. I have some terrific photos that I'd like to share with you. They should be coming up in just a minute. Nope. Here we go. This is from, we had a couple of events that happened during the month of September. This is one of our very special events. This is the Honor Flight where our J-Razi cadets and some of our parents and our staff members took a bus that Board Member Kathy Stout arranged for us. And we went to RSW to welcome back veterans that came back from a full-day trip in Washington, DC. And you can see that there is a long reception line. Our cadets said, one of the gals that I talked to today, she said, "That was one of the best things I've done in my entire life." So we got some pizza for them before they left. They wore their uniforms. They did the color guard at the airport. At the same night, they also did the color guard at the Mayor's Scholarship Ball. So it was a very busy night for our cadets. And we welcomed back many veterans. Those are the signs that we made. So I'll just give you a second to look at these pictures. It was really a wonderful, wonderful event. You have to be 18-years-old to be an escort, to escort, to fly with the veterans. There's our Lieutenant Colonel right there shaking hands, and to spend the day with them. We have very few 18-year-olds. So we're hoping that now that we know what it's about, next year, we can send some of our cadets as guides to work, to walk with the veterans. Okay. So also in the month of September, on the same day, to be exact, we had the Festa Italiana fundraiser for the Cape Coral Historical Museum put on, where our J-Razi cadets were also there organizing traffic and helping with setup. And we had the Mayor's Scholarship Ball at the Weston Hotel. Several Board Members and myself and Principal Jackie Corey attended. It was a fundraiser to raise money for student scholarships, and it was a wonderful event. We didn't budget funds for that, so we kind of moved some funds around so that we could attend. I highly recommend the Board attending next year. It was a very nice event. Well done. We made a lot of great community connections. It was, it was a terrific event. So, events in October. We just finished up last week, roundtable discussions with our Strategic Plan Facilitator, Facilitator Doug Van Dyke. We will be taking those deep-dive discussions, analyzing them and categorizing them into three or four areas for strategy development. And that's going to happen at our strategic planning retreat in November. We need to discuss a date change, unfortunately. We originally scheduled that for November 13th, Monday, and a half-day on Tuesday, November 14th. The green room is not available on Monday. So we were hoping that the Board could rearrange their schedule and meet on Tuesday, November 14th. I believe our, we were thinking 10:00 to 5:00 PM, followed by the regular Governing Board meeting at 5:30, where we will have our end-of-the-year audit review by Clifton Larson Allen. So let me just repeat, the change of date would be all day on Tuesday, the 14th, from 10:00 to 5:00, followed by a regular Governing Board meeting, which is scheduled for that evening at 5:30. And then we do a half-day on Wednesday to wrap up our strategic plan from 12:00 to noon. Okay. Let's see. Principals and I will be attending the Aurora Institute Symposium, used to be known as I-Na-Cole, this weekend in Palm Springs. It's Saturday through Wednesday. We are very excited about attending this event. The Aurora Institute, just a little bit of background, works to transform educational systems in an innovative fashion. They work on creative, creating and advancing student-centered policies, sharing best practices on personalized and competency-based education and next-generation learning models. Competency-based education, just to give you a little background, focuses on the following areas, not limited to the following areas, but the fact that not all students learn at the same pace, not all students learn the same way. It teaches students to be self-directed in their learning. It focuses on mastery of content versus time and seat. And it, most importantly, it features performance assessments as a key equity strategy versus testing to demonstrate knowledge. So for example, if you're learning a lesson in social studies and as opposed to taking a 34-question multiple-choice test, you could show that you've mastered the content by creating a play, writing a report, making a project, things of that nature. And it also focuses on future educational spaces and what they will look like. Will they be brick and mortar? Will they be virtual? Will they be a combination? So, learning about these innovative practices is intriguing to all of us. We, of course, always want to be on the forefront of learning, how to learn and how to make learning prioritized and key. So we're going to go and we will report back to you when we return on what we've learned and what we can bring to our, our school system here, K through 12. Okay. I want to give you an update on our portable project. Like I said in our last meeting, the portables are up and running. We're operating on a temporary certificate of occupancy, which is normal. We had some glitches in some areas. We had a fire panel that got struck by lightning that we are repairing. Let's see, the fencing permit, because the fencing is still down, is being worked on this Tuesday and Wednesday. We have a crew coming the 14th and 15th to repair the uneven floors from Vesta. So all those little checklist items are being checked off as we speak. So we are making good progress with that. The, oh, I forgot, the playground. Oasis Elementary North's playground is complete. Children are playing on it. And I had a picture and I forgot to bring it. Just around here. So it looks terrific. It is a very large structure under shade. And how do you think the students feel about their playground being up and running?
They're very, very excited. Too excited. They put out a lot of rules to remind them, "Rum rur," but it is kind of rum rur. So they're very, very excited about it.
And they've been waiting quite a while. So that process is finally done. Oasis Elementary South, I'm happy to say, they dug the footers for the shade structure this week. So they've gotten all the electrical lines mapped, identified, variances identified. It's a whole big process. They are ready to rock and roll. So that's the first step. They dig the footers, and they're pretty big holes. They set the concrete, they set the poles, and then they build the structure underneath. My anticipation is hopefully early to mid-November. We'll have to see. Once that concrete is set for those footers, it has to sit for a while. So, and we are next in line for that project. So once they get on and they start that project, they'll go until the very end. So, happy to say that that is underway. As you know, in our, in our parent and students' survey, one of the most mentioned features that they were looking for was a playground. And some of the comments from the students were pretty entertaining. "I want that playground right now." "Will I have that playground before I graduate from fifth grade?" So yes, the answer is yes. Yes, yes, yes. We're all set. And finally, I wanted to talk very quickly about the City Council introduced an ordinance on 10-4 regarding the change of board terms for all of the city boards, with all having the same beginning and end term in respective years. I did some research on the request of Dr. Manaya about how other educational boards function, because remember, we are dealing with students. We're dealing with student policies. We're dealing with parents. We're dealing with learning and overturning the board. So I wanted to do some research on what other educational boards do. So I did, I contacted the Sarasota School of Arts and Sciences, another charter school very similar to ours. All their directors have two-year terms or until a successor is elected. The City of Pembroke Pines, they're a little bit different. Their board consists of a mayor and four commissioners, and they all have four-year terms. The Babcock Neighborhood School, the board members there have three-year terms, and those board members are all over the country. They are not necessarily local board members. I don't know if that matters. And the Marco Island Academy, a charter school in Marco Island, they have indefinite terms. I did call Kathleen Schoenberg, an attorney who does all of our governor's training for our board and for boards across the state of Florida. And her recommendation was there really is no magic number for board terms. Schools vary widely in the way board terms are managed. She said staggering terms is the most important. Three-year terms are most common and staggered so that only about one-third of the board turns over each year. I'm also waiting for a response from Christine Mentis with the Charter Support Unit on her recommendation for board terms. The way I read the ordinance is that board terms will turn over every two years with a two-year term maximum. So when I configured how our board would be turning over, it would still be about a one-third of the board would turn over each year. It would not affect board turnover rate. And that's all I have for my report today. Any questions?
Questions?
Yes. I did want to ask you, I remember when we were visiting the portables and we did the tour, some of the trees looked like they weren't doing so good. And I didn't know, I know you had mentioned that, and I just wanted to follow up to see if they had got new trees or are they going to address that in any way?
I know that our project manager, Rego, is on the, it's Danny Yates Landscape Company. They have a little more sod areas to fill in. They were waiting on the playground to be finished, so they have to not only do two little strips of sod, but they need to, they are coming out to take a look at the trees. He's just waiting on a response from the company as to what they plan on doing to replace those trees. So we're on top of it. Thanks for reminding me.
And then one final thing. Now that the playground for Oasis Elementary North has been put in place, are the children still going to be going over to Jim Jeffers? Do we know? Is that still going to be happening?
Yes, they still will go to Jim Jeffers, because the portables have taken up a significant amount of space that was used for playground area in the back, which is gone now. So Kevin and Kelly are still working on how to reconstruct recess. We've got the little playground for K and 1. We've got the big playground, but we've got a lot of students that go to recess at any one time. So yes, our inter-local use agreement for Jim, with Jim Jeffers allows us to use that playground area as well.
Thank you.
Other, other questions? Mr. Moore, did you want to address anything that on the...
No, I think Superintendent Collins did a fine job. If anybody does have any questions regarding it, certainly, I, well, I'm at your disposal. It's not just this board. It's all boards. There's an effort afoot to make all of the appointments across the city co-terminate or equal. So if you have any specific questions regarding it, let me know.
Not necessarily a question, but more of a comment. I can't speak on other boards because obviously we're not part of them, but as far as the school board goes, I'm not so sure two years is a great term limit. It typically takes one of our board members probably a year and a half just to get their feet wet and kind of figure out what's going on. So I think in order to be a productive board member and eventually take a chair position or a vice chair position and know what you're talking about, I think that extra year really helps. So I think it's something that we really need to consider. Maybe, like I said, the other boards, it might work well for them, but I'm not so sure it works well for the school board. What we're doing with children and a lot of policies and procedures that you got to kind of get to know, and it takes a little bit to know them, so.
Any other comments? And what would the, so it's scheduled for the second review. How would you describe that, Ian?
The second hearing, the public hearing portion of the ordinance process is on the 18th. So if any of you want to discuss with the council, you're more than welcome to come at the beginning of the meeting or public comment to share your comments directly to the entire council. As far as putting together a resolution for this board for, to be presented at the council, I don't know if we have enough time to get it approved by this board and presented to the council, presumably if they pass it on the 18th.
Right. And if by chance we did want to consider a resolution, although they may still vote on it on the 18th, they may also delay until they receive the resolution?
They may do that. It's just the communicating with the, this board, communication between the two boards becomes an issue, is to how to do that. Ideally, if we had the time, we would do that through a resolution. We would, we would, either I or the superintendent would be instructed to come back with a resolution capsulizing what you wanted to say, and then the entire board could approve it, and then that resolution gets presented to the City Council. It's just, it's just difficult to have a conversation, if you will, between the two boards.
Right. Understood.
But if you want to go and petition the council individually, you certainly can share that sentiment individually. If you'd like to make a motion tonight to maybe have the council consider the terms, what, paralleling what you had said, board member. It's just, it's, it's just difficult.
Timing, because of the timing.
Right. It's, it's difficult carrying the communication so it gets presented to the, from this board to that board. It just becomes unwieldy.
So I think our two options are either to, either individually draft an email to each of the City Council members, or to go speak to them individually, or to show up at the City Council meeting when it's being addressed. And similar to here, you'll have one to three minutes to share your thoughts. Or we could opt to draft a resolution. It wouldn't be voted on until our next meeting. And whether the City Council votes in advance of us or not, at a minimum, they may know that it's coming, and that could potentially delay their decision. So, any thoughts on which way to proceed?
My understanding that there's a third way. You had mentioned to motion, make a motion tonight to petition City Council, I think?
Yes, if the board wanted, because of the exigency, if the board wanted to pass a motion and then within the, within the motion to direct somebody to go, the chair or somebody to go and present the motion to the board, that is something that I have seen done. But it wouldn't be, there wouldn't be anything reduced to it, right? Wouldn't be as influential, in my view, as a resolution that had been viewed by everybody and debated, deliberated, and passed as the voice of the council, excuse me, as the voice of this board. But it...
It appears we may not have time for that, though.
For the resolution?
Correct.
If the ordinance is adopted on the 18th, that's, that's correct. That, that would be an issue. And it's currently scheduled to be heard on the 18th.
Well, we could consider two actions, right? One action would be that we do request that we have a spokesperson at the next council meeting presenting our collective position. And we could also request staff to, Mr. Moore or Mrs. Collins, to develop that resolution so in case it does get postponed, we have the opportunity at our next board meeting to debate it. So there's two actions that we could take. And if only one is successful, no problem, right? But again, further discussion?
I'm thinking that both of those options seem, with the limited time we've got, seem like they make more sense at this point, rather than just doing either or.
Yeah, I agree. We should go with both.
Okay, so that would require a motion.
I motion to draft a resolution to present to City Council. Do we need to elaborate on the term limits?
You want Ms. Collins to write the resolution? We'll both work together if that's okay with Ms. Collins.
Hey, that would be perfect scenario, I think. So, so for the City Attorney and for the Superintendent to draft a resolution to present to City Council on the term limits that will be decided on the 18th.
So if I can clarify, what I'm hearing you say is to, for the City Attorney and the Superintendent to draft a proposed resolution to be presented to this board at its next regular meeting, to then be presented to the City Council?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so that's...
That's the first motion.
That's the first motion, so...
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on the first motion?
And if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt. The substantive of the resolution is because of the time it takes for a board. It takes about a year and a half for a board member to fully get their feet on the functions of the responsibilities of this board.
Correct. I, I think that's stated perfectly. It's a, it's a big budget. It's a big part. It's many different facets, and I think that it takes a long time for a board member to be educated enough to make good decisions, I think, especially in a chair or vice chair role. I think it's imperative that they have more time, I think.
So are you just saying...
Effectively.
Pardon?
To do it effectively.
Okay, so you're wanting the resolution to basically say two years is too short? Or are you also preparing to say a certain time is recommended by the board?
I think that the time that we have now in place of three-year terms staggered, I think, is very...
That's efficient?
Yes.
Okay, I think, I understand the direction, unless there's any more.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's the first action. The second action was that we designate someone to speak on our behalf at the next council meeting in case it, they will, are not able to delay their decision. So we would need a motion for that second action.
Have discussion first?
Surely.
Absolutely. I think that Dr. Manaya has proven to be the person who can speak for the board in a manner that I think he would speak for us the best, and I think he should be the individual that speaks on our behalf. Does anybody else?
I would second that. I think that, I think Dr. Manaya would be an excellent choice in this case, having the experience to be able to hopefully reflect our desires and what we think might be best for the time limits in this situation.
So I would motion to designate Dr. Manaya to be our speaker at the City Council meeting on the 18th to present our case.
I would second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Very good. One, one last final comment. You all had, received a copy of this. This is the high school's beautiful brochure that Ms. Corey developed with our, what the name of our classes? Digital design class. And it's beautifully done. So I wanted to share it with you. Do you all have a copy? Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Collins. And now we have the City Managers' Report. Mr. Mason, Director of Finance, NHR, and five other things.
Probably all the above. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director, and interim HR Director. Yeah, thank you very much. Anyways, just a couple of, three things I want to talk about. Bus acquisition. We're in the process of acquiring seven additional buses. We'll lease them again and bring back the lease agreement for next year. The, well, actually, when we, when they, when they come, when we actually get them, it usually takes about nine months to build them. Six bu-, sorry, six buses, my bad, six buses. It takes about nine months to a year to build them, so it'll take that long before we actually get them on site. Last week, Board Member Jackson came in to talk to me, and he informed me the fire alarms in the portables were not connected to the main building. I've informed facilities of this, he's absolutely correct, we actually have two contracts for the fire alarm system out there. The portables are under one fire alarm system, the school is under another. Facilities is aware of it, they're going to get the two buildings to talk to each other, so if they have a fire alarm in the main building, the portables will hear it, and of course, if there's one in the portables, that the main building should hear it, so we'll make sure that that happens. Also, there was something about awnings over stairwells, we're, I have also informed facilities of same, and they'll go out there and they'll take a look at them and see if something needs to be changed. Other than that, that's the three things that I want to talk about. I understand that, yes, you all did do a, a survey, I have copies of the surveys, and we're talking to any of the groups that were affected by the survey, okay?
Any questions for Mr. Mason?
Comment? Thank you for the exigent resolution to the fire alarm, it was a safety hazard, and I think it got overlooked, and thank you for making that happen so fast.
Sure, no worries.
And for taking a look at the awning and stuff, it's great to be able to relay that and then see stuff start to happen and the action taken. And I think that's in no small measure to you, so thank you.
Sure, no worries. Thank you, appreciate it, thanks much.
Okay, chairman's report. This is a little bit more for context on the role, and, and next meeting, we're actually gonna reorganize, and the way the reorganization takes place, we do the moment of silence, we do a pledge of allegiance, we do roll call, and then right after, we nominate a chair. We vote on a chair, and then the chair takes over right then. The chair then, the new chair, works through who the, the vice chair nomination process, right? So that's gonna happen at our next meeting, right? So, so I just wanted to share some comments, you know, I was first asked to serve on the board 2019, 2020, and it was always a goal of mine, so it was, it was great that, that I had that opportunity, but I was appointed April of 2019, and Michael Campbell was our, our chairman at, at the time, and by my second year, I was asked to serve as vice chair and then assume the role in 2020. Then we had the pandemic for the balance of the year, right, of 2020. And in March of 2021, I was asked to serve as chair, and, and to the same points that Mr. Jackson stated and that we all sort of understand, let's take, regardless of what your background is, it takes you a while to learn this system. You know, if we had 25 students, okay, maybe a one-year term's okay, but this is a big-time school system, and it is a world-class school system, so you don't want to really make big decisions without understanding the context. The end of 2021, 2022 school year was the end of my three-year term, and I don't think I could have done any of that without one year for grounding a second year as vice chair and then the third year. And, and then two unexpected challenges took place, because by, by, by my third year, I was the chair, I was, I brought in as chair, and the first was that the city wanted to take over internal functions of HR, facilities, finance, maintenance, IT, and the rationale, of course, was they were going to assist extensively with the lease payment that we had of about $3 million per year to 1.5 million a year, and they definitely wanted more oversight of those departments so that they could make sure that things were operating well. And, so that was, that was, that was good. And then the city manager at the time requested that the transition of all those departments take place in 30 days. I think we were advised in May, and by June, they said, all right, we're, cut, cutovers in June. So we pushed back a little bit as a board. Mrs. Collins and I met with Mayor Gunter, Mayor Gunter agreed, okay, let's extend the transition out to 12 months. And at that very first meeting of transition, we requested service level agreements, and Assistant City Manager Connie Barron was in agreement that we should have service level agreements. We had an additional curveball 2021, 2022 year, because the pandemic was in its second year, right? And we still managed to win awards, we still managed to have incredible recognitions, and that was, of course, due to parents, students, teachers, administrators, principal, and a superintendent. So the city was also a great contributor to our success, and a key measure of any K-12 system is the graduation rates. 99% graduation rates, right? That's just incredible, that's just, just incredible. 2020, 22, 2023 was shaping up to be our best year, we won the Cognia Award, one of 42 school systems in over 40 countries to win the top recognition as school system of distinction. And you know, many school systems aspire to be world-class, Lee County School District aspires to be world-class. We can actually say we are world-class, okay? And in normal circumstances, that would have been my last year, I would have completed my three-year term, that was it. But I was asked to run for a second term because we still faced challenges with the pandemic and the transition with the city, right? And I only say that because every board's gonna have its own unique challenges, our new, our new leadership team is gonna have its own unique challenges, and, and there's no way to really prepare for them and other than going through them and making the best decisions you can at the time. And as we know, September 28th, another curveball, Ian comes in, right? And then that brought incredible challenges to our system, our staff, our teachers, our families, our community. We still came out of it with a 99% graduation rate, right? So despite all of our successes, we weren't getting much press. I mean, you would, you would look at the, in the paper, in the breeze, and everywhere else, you didn't see anything about Oasis. So Superintendent Collins reached out to Spiro and Associates, our marketing firm, and now it's like, we're, we're in the breeze, we're in the news press, we're on TV, almost weekly, if not daily, and it's all good press, it's all good press, right? So as we approached 2023, 2024, it was questionable whether our portable modulars would be finished. The superintendent I met with, the mayor, superintendent with the city manager, and shortly thereafter, we were able to make it on time, right, that bodges were put into service. So, yeah, I'm stepping down as chair next month when we reorganize. And as, as Chairman Michael Campbell shared with me, he said, you can be assured that you're gonna have challenges to contend with. Trust the board that you have, trust the incredible work that the school system and, and Mrs. Collins as superintendent is doing, and we'll, we'll get to the right decision. This, this upcoming year, what are some of the issues, right? Service level agreements between the school district and the city may not happen, there's, there's a movement afoot for, for are those really needed? And even though this goes against best practices when one organization is paying another millions of dollars for services, this new board is gonna have to contend with that, right? There's a movement to possibly change Amendment 26, which in essence is our bylaws, our governing bylaws, the board should pay attention to that. The strategic planning initiative is gonna be extremely valuable, to chart the course, to have the new leadership better prepared for those next steps. You know, and, and I, I've been in education for the last three decades, and on several world-class teams, and I know how fragile it is for when you start dismantling certain parts of what makes it work without the full forethought of what the trade-offs are, that's when, when a world-class system or any system gets into trouble. So to the new board that will be in place by next month, be vigilant, weigh in where needed. I have always found city and county government elected officials to be extremely willing to listen and learn on important decisions that, that need to be made, and I look forward to passing the torch next month to the new leadership team, and I'm sure the board will continue to ensure we remain a world-class system. But thank you all for your opportunity, for this opportunity for me to serve as your chair, and it's been a wonderful few years working with, with all of you. And next, next month, the torch, the torch passes, so there's the chairman's, chairman's report. All right, now the foundation report.
Gary Sweeney, foundation president, thank you for your service, by the way, you've done a lot. I'll be really quick, the only takeaway, we're doing a lot of good things, we, we, as I mentioned last, last go around, we, we kind of acquired the Booster Club, and we've, we've raised a nice chunk of money for that, and we're, it's already coming back, yesterday, I think we voted, I don't know how many grants, about eight. Have the emails gone out? I don't want to ruin it. Oh. Well, I don't want to spoil it, there's some really good stuff that we bought, so, and athletics is definitely gonna boost, I'll, I'll leave it at that, but, but the real takeaway that I want to do is we actually moved our, our Rally on the Green, which is our, our biggest fundraiser event of the year, we moved it from what's historically a March-April timeline to, in two weeks. And because, we, we need help getting attendees, and we need to help getting more sponsors in the next two weeks, so I just beg everybody here, that if you have any resources, please just send that out, and we will, if it's appropriate, I can send you guys all an email, if you have not received one already, with all the information, real quick and sweet, because I don't know, nobody wants to read long paragraphs in emails, I don't, I know I don't. I'll send that out tonight or tomorrow at the latest, and if you could just help us with that, that would be very, very, very appreciated. And that's really it, thank you.
Thank you, very appreciate it. And we have staff comment.
I'd like to introduce Dr. John Omenson, Director of STEM. He's gonna give us, give you an update on some of the great projects that our students are working on.
Evening board, I'm just gonna pull this up real quick. All right, this is what happens when a math teacher tries to run the technology. All right, so good evening, I'm excited to be here tonight to share with you some of the good things that we have going on in the STEM world, kind of a carryover from last school year, as well as some new things that we have going on this school year. One of our big initiatives this school year that I've talked to with the teachers across all four schools is this idea of empathy through design. And we started this last school year with a project, and it's extended over this school year into several different projects. And one of the ones that we're wrapping up right now is a vending machine project, which the foundation helped us with, and they funded this project, so we appreciate their support with that. Our high school students are working through a program called Fusion 360, which is a 3D design program. The goal is to get students at the high school level certified, an industry certification in this software, and to create some background for them, as well as give them an application for working through that program. We asked them to take the information that they had started to learn about it and create a toy that would be of interest to an elementary school student. And we wanted them to showcase what they've learned about the program, but also think about their end user, which is the whole idea of empathy through design. Who's going to get this, and are they going to like this, and is it going to help them in some way? So our high schoolers worked through, and you can see some of their designs there on the left, things that they think students would like. We've been working the past couple of weeks on 3D printing, these different toys that the students have created. You can see on the right there, some of the different designs that our students have made at the high school, we're putting them into these orbs, and you can see here in the front of the, the room, vending machine about half-full right now with some of these toys. We have probably 100 to 150 more printing back at the school as we speak, so not only will this vending machine be filled up, but a second one will be filled up as well, with the goal of giving one to each of our two elementary schools, one will go to the north campus, one will go to the south. And Ms. Grassick and Mr. Brown can decide how they want to use those, if they want to use it for good behavior rewards, for something else. Students can go up, go to the vending machine, get a toy that was created for them by our high schoolers, and just have, you know, something unique to our system to, to take home. So another project in this empathy through design, this is one that we started last school year, and we're absolutely continuing over to this school year. It's a middle school project, it's diabetes education bears. So these are middle schoolers in the Making for Good class are working on understanding diabetes, as well as representation through these toys. And we discussed with them this history of stuffed bear and stuffed animal modifications for people with physical disabilities. Historically, these toys have been remade for people with things like hearing aids, cochlear implants, things of that nature to provide representation, and we noticed that people with diabetes weren't represented in these modifications, so we challenged our students to create a CGM, a constant glucose monitor, to add on to, to stuffed bears. They created it in Tinkercad, which is the precursor of Fusion 360, building our progression of skills. They created the, the CGM, they sewed it onto the bear, they created a shirt that represented a graphic of what we were going for. And last semester, or last year, we created about 100 of these, which were donated to Galisona Children's in Fort Myers, as well as Laboner Children's in Memphis. They were sent out with the goal that these bears would be given to children when they were first diagnosed with type 1 diabetes. They were used to provide a sense of comfort and representation for these kids. And we also heard that the nurses and doctors are using them to educate the students, where the, the CGM is located, how it can be used to support them through their new diagnosis, and you can see that on the picture on the right, that's from the hospital in Memphis when that young, young student was given the bear, his bear for the first time. We're continuing this project this semester with two new hospitals, one in Orlando and one in Atlanta. The foundation supported us in this project as well last year, they provided all of the bears, as well as the vinyl and some of the filament needed. So again, we appreciate their support as always in these projects. Another one that we have coming up is bag design, so we have another new middle school class starting this year, it's a class in digital design. We realized that one of the progressions that we didn't have as strong, leading into the high school, was the digital design course, so we're piloting that this semester with one class of eighth graders. One of their projects was to create a bag with a vinyl logo, so they're learning kind of the principles of design, how they can apply that. And this is an example of one of those bags, this is from one of our eighth graders. This one, she actually created it based on her mother's business, so she could bring it home and use it, they all got to keep the bags. From this, we were talking, and we're going to ask these students, now that they're experts in creating and weeding and heat pressing and all this good stuff that I've learned for myself the last two weeks, to create several bags to give out at the trunk or treat event next week that'll promote our school system, so we'll hand those out, but the kids will be the ones who will actually be creating the bags that we hand out. This one is one that our elementary school students are going to be working on, snowflake ornaments, so I've been talking with Ms. Pink and Ms. Janes at our two elementary schools, we're gonna ask our first graders in Tinkercad to create snowflakes, and these are gonna be done using a tool called a scribble tool, so they're actually gonna be hand drawing these snowflakes, which we're then going to take, and Mr. Perez at the high school is going to help me laser cut these out on the laser in his building on acrylic. When we have these cut out, we're going to ask our students to put a letter with them, we're going to hopefully partner with some assisted living facilities and donate these as ornaments to them around the holidays, giving those students as young as first grade the opportunity to understand again end users and start building that empathy project, process, that we're not always just creating for ourselves, but sometimes we're creating for other people as well, and just get into that idea of making and giving, building that empathy. One last new one, this Thursday, we're heading over to the Cape Coral Museum of History to discuss a potential project for the high schoolers. Our advanced robotics students are learning this Arduino this school year, which is a, like a microprocessor, which they'll learn how to code, a text-based coding through that, as well as how to use sensors and external devices to create and move things around. We want to ask them to create a, an interactive display for the museum, so something that can then be donated to the museum to add to their displays, give our kids an opportunity to give back to their community, and leave a part of themselves and their learning in the museum, this will give them a huge focus for learning as well, because this is absolutely going to be something that we hope they take great pride in, because hopefully it will be in the museum once they're done. A couple of partnerships that I wanted to mention, a few weeks ago, we had a discussion with Florida Southwestern about dual enrollment programs, and how we could increase our IT and cyber pathway at the high school level. We had a very productive discussion with them, and they gave us some great ideas of how we could do that. They've offered to come and speak with our students who are interested in these career pathways. They want us to offer kind of intro-level courses in IT to our. They want us to offer kind of intro-level courses in IT to our students. Those would be courses in hardware, software, and intro computer programming. Once they complete those set of courses, they will have the background to take a certification in CompTIA A+, which is an intro-level cybersecurity certification that they can take and work in a field if they want to, or they can then take that and extend their knowledge in one of three areas, in either networking, cybersecurity, or computer programming, where they have additional courses at FSW they can take. This can also provide a jumping-off point for them for future coursework towards bachelor's and master's degrees. But we look at this as a way to introduce our students to this field and how they can build that interest in that level. So we're excited about this potential partnership and the dual enrollment there. We also, a couple of weeks ago, had Full Sail University come to Oasis High School. We are a partner school, high school with them. They brought Tech Fest, which was a great day-long event. Most of the students in the school had the opportunity to go through, learn about a variety of different tech fields, everything from ARVR to robotics to three-dimensional art. We also had a live esports tournament, which was a highlight of the event for many of our students. They got very excited and very into it, watching their peers compete. Twelve of our students actually were given the opportunity, based on how they performed in this esports tournament, to go to a statewide tournament up at Full Sail in November. I believe it's November 18th, it's a Saturday. Mr. Perez, our esports coach, has spoken to these students. Many of them are interested in going up, so it looks like we'll be taking the Shark Fan up to the Orlando area in November, cheering on our students as they compete. Thank you to Ms. Corey and her team for the support and putting this together. It was a great event. Kids learned a lot, and they had a good time learning about Full Sail, as well as these different tech careers. Kaiser University is another school that we've been partnered with for a while. Dr. Curran over there has been instrumental in helping us with our cyber and IT pathway. When, the last we met with her in May, she put us in touch with the Crime Scene and Forensics Unit over there. They said that they wanted to partner with us on a field trip, and we'll be taking a class of middle schoolers over there in November for Forensics Day. So they're going to set up a variety of different stations. Our kids will have the opportunity to do a bunch of hands-on activities related to anything from blood spatter analysis to fingerprint analysis, cybercrime, shoe print analysis, but I'm excited to see what this is all about. So we'll be heading over there with about 70 students, mostly our students in the biomedical engineering class, as well as some of our TSA students who are doing forensics at the competition level, so they'll get more hands-on experience there. Finally, one last field trip. We have our Oasis Middle School Sea Perch. If you haven't seen Sea Perch in action and you would like to attend, I'll make sure to get that date to you. It's a terrific event where students have been working all semester on underwater robotics. This is their opportunity to test their underwater robots in an obstacle course in an actual pool. And this year, the high school advanced robotics classes are working on Sea Glide, which is something we've been talking about for a while, and that's what that image is up on the screen. That one takes Sea Perch and just goes to a new level with it, more complex programming, more work with buoyancy. And this one is not connected through cable, so there's a lot more involved in this one. They're going to go with our middle schoolers and test their Sea Glide out, and we're very excited about this event. Like I said, if you haven't seen it in person, it's definitely one to see, and I'll make sure to get the date to you once we have that. And I think, yes, that is it, I guess. Any questions?
Just one real quick. I noticed you mentioned something about esports. Is that Madden in soccer, or is that something else different?
It's, I've learned a lot about esports over the last year, myself. Esports is any sort of competitive video game. So it could be Madden, it could be FIFA. The one that Full Sail brought down is actually Super Smash Brothers. We have students competing in Splatoon, I believe is the title, Minecraft is another one. It could be anything, it could be chess. It's just competing on the computer or a device, video games. We've had students from the high school actually get scholarships, college scholarships for this. At Full Sail, the in-person tournament, the top three students who placed the in-person tournament will actually be eligible for scholarships to Full Sail, $5,000, $10,000, and $15,000. So a lot, a ton of money for video games. Again, I've learned a lot about it over the last few years. It's pretty, it's neat to watch the kids perform in it.
And you said there were 12 students from, from our school system that, that
That's correct.
That's going to be sending to the competition?
Yes, ninth to 12th graders. Yes, yeah, very exciting.
Other questions? How many students would you say are involved in the various STEM initiatives that you've developed?
So in terms of classes as well, from, I would say K to 8, just about everybody takes a STEM class at one point throughout the school year. At the high school level, I was talking to Mr. Perez today, his numbers are, he probably has about 200 students this year, close to that. So a good quarter of the high school is in that track, but we also have students in digital design. We have a couple students, we have students taking DIT classes, so I'd say a good, close to 50% of the high school. So our goal has always been STEM for all, getting kids exposed to these career pathways, and we're doing a pretty good job getting close to that.
Fantastic. Sounds like world-class to me. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have no unfinished business, new business.
I'd like to introduce Amy Brown, HR Manager for the Charter Schools.
Hello, Chairman Manaya and members of the governing board. Thank you again for allowing me to speak briefly in front of you this evening. It's not as exciting as the forensic analysis or the wonderful performance of the JRTC, which I got to witness firsthand at RSW, and was very proud to be a part of that. But it has to do with our teachers and their pay, so very dear, close and dear to my heart. As you know, the Florida Education Finance Program, as part of the legislature, annually provides teacher salary increase, fundings to assist the school districts in their recruitment and retention of classroom teachers and other instructional personnel. These funds are comprised of two components, which is a large amount to maintain increases that have been given previously, and a smaller subset to continue to grow those salaries so that we do remain competitive. These revenue amounts were included in our annual budget for this current school year. And if you recall during our budget presentations earlier this year, we did allocate a 1% across-the-board increase for all of our charter school staff, using a portion of the growth allocation. And those have already been implemented, they're being paid out now bi-weekly through payroll. However, that increase did not fully utilize our entire growth allocation component of So at this time, and this is the, as the schedule that is set forth in the legislature, it is time to submit our plan to the Florida Department of Education through the School District of Lee County to say, how are we going to distribute the remaining balance? If we don't distribute the remaining balance, we return it to the state, which I don't think anybody wants to give away the money to the state. So we have done an analysis with Ms. Collins, we've met with the principals, and crunched the numbers kind of behind the scenes, and what we have found is of that $249,000, we have roughly $107,000 that remains unspent in this school year. So we did go through and determine how much per teacher is currently being paid, what it would take to expend the rest of those funds equally, and we have came up with a plan to increase the teachers who currently make less than $60,000 a year, to increase them by a percentage of 1.084% to evenly distribute these remaining funds. And then we also have some instructional personnel whose salaries are currently a little under where we think the market should have them at, so they would too, or they would also receive that 1.084% salary bump to increase them a little bit more. These would be increases retroactive back to the beginning of the school year, August 1st. And on an individual basis, just for a point of reference, they do range from about $515 additional salary to about $626 additional dollars. So when you spread it over that many people, it's not a great amount of money, but it does compound annually, so if we were to increase salaries in the future, it would be something that's compoundable. So one unfortunate thing that is certain, of course, though, are taxes. So we did have to set aside a portion of that, that allocation, that growth allocation to cover the additional payroll costs that compound as well with our FRS, our workers' comp premiums, and our Social Security and FICA taxes as well. So we've built all that in there to make sure we didn't overspend. We spent pretty much to the penny of this $249,378. So the plan is attached in your materials. It is a template that the Florida Department of Education got out very late, so we do apologize that, you will see at the top of this, as this was due October 1st, but we didn't have another meeting between when we got the worksheets that they needed us to complete and tonight. So with that, I will pause and let you ask any questions that you might have.
Questions?
Yes. How will the, the teachers and staff receive this? Will it be one lump payment to sort of catch everybody up, or is it just going to start rolling out in their regular paychecks?
That's a wonderful question. We, like I said, we had to make it, we will have to make it retroactive when we process these through payroll. So we will give everyone a lump sum to catch them up to the four, five, six checks that might have been issued already, and then all future checks will be recalculated to just spread the balance out for the rest of the year.
Thank you. Other questions?
Is this a one-time payment, or is this something that's going to be recurring year over year?
We, this portion, the growth and the maintenance allocations will be recurring as part of the FEFP every year. They used to be more distinctly called out as an object, but now they are just kind of blended in and were advised, you need to spend this percent on maintenance and X percent on growth.
Any other questions? Do we need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now, final board comment.
I think you have the most amazing job, because that sounded so fun. I was like, can I trade? But congratulations, that was wonderful. This, this school district never ceases to amaze me, like every time I hear more about what can be accomplished here. It's, it's really heartwarming and incredible. And lastly, thank you for being such a fearless leader and, you know, bringing me in and teaching me some of the ways in this short time. You will be missed dearly.
And I just, when I, when I sat down and I looked at this brochure, I was like, wow, this, this is amazing. It's, my understanding was that this was done at the school, correct? So to everybody who worked on it, just an amazing, amazing job. This represents the school and the system, and just, it offers so much, I didn't even realize as I was going through it. It's, as Dr. Manaya said many times, just a world-class system, and this helps to really demonstrate that. So thank you, and thank you also, Dr. Manaya. I have so much, I've learned so much from you, I've enjoyed working with you, and as has already been stated, you are definitely going to be missed.
As always, I would like to thank our city partners. We appreciate you taking your time out of your day to come do this as well. The synergy between the city and the school has been improving, and we see that, and we appreciate it very much. So thank you for our city partners. Empathy Through Design, what a great title. I think that encompasses our values as a school system. It's a great way to give back to our community as well. That always creates more stakeholders. Whenever we're giving back, more people are going to start looking, and they're going to be wanting to be involved, and then they become our cheerleaders, you know, they rally for us that way. So I think that's a great way to do it. So I look forward to the report from the conference that's coming up. I think that's going to be really interesting to see where they think education is going and how we should be pivoting. I think it's great that we're going to be attending that. I attended the Mayor's Ball for Scholarships. That was a great way to network with some of the stakeholders in the community and get to a more personal level with them, so it was nice to be able to do that. So I think it was very important that we do more things like that in the future and continue to do that, because the mayor's always been so kind and gracious to us as well. So, and I am also very excited about the playgrounds, maybe not as much as the kids, but that's progress, so, good.
Comments? No comments?
Thank you for all of your time. I love being on the board, and thank you for all your dedicated and service work. And Dr. Omenson and all the projects that he's working on, how creative and however he's finding it, designing it, thinking about it. I wish I had one more child in, like, in elementary school, middle school, to really get the full force of everything. And, you know, my son is, was working on those in his robotics class, and he was one of the finalists for the, so he's going to be heading up to Full Sail to do it. He does not want to be a designer, but it's going to be fun for him, and he would be very excited to win second place.
Exciting, exciting.
So thank you, Dr. O, for everything you are doing. These are amazing projects, and my son certainly loves being a part of Mr. Perez's class for the two years, and he's been working on a lot of these.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any comments to the circuit? Good?
Yeah.
You're up front.
No, I mean, I completely, as I said, thanking you, I've had an opportunity to spend some time with you, and you're amazing, and you've been on a lot of levels. Dr. Rose actually plowed me away, too. I mean, who doesn't? Let school get this. Like, I know this doesn't ring any bells from when I was in school. I was just trying to clock out and go home, you know, so very, very cool. The extra mile is just very evident in every firm, so it's just very, it's cool. I've got two kids from this one, so.
Great, thank you. All right. And just final comments, I think with the Aurora Institute, I think competency-based education, what Dr. Rose is doing, that is competency-based education. So you might, you know, find out who organizes the workshops there for next year's conference, and we have a potential presenter. But no, thank you all, and we are set for our next meeting. It's going to be November 14th. We don't know the exact location yet.
Green Room.
The Green Room, okay, the Green Room. And as you heard, first we're going to have strategic planning, and then we'll follow up with our meeting. And thank you all for your kind comments. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.